Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Good evening on the, um, are we all set to go? Anybody on with us?
Nope.
Nope.
Shocking as that is.
Public comment, any public comments? We'll get right into it. Public hearing for thirty-nine Main Street. Amanda, you gonna read it?
Let me see if I can find it. Oh, it looks really slow tonight. Hold on. Hold on.
Do you want it?
Do you have it? Thank you. Okay, uh, the Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, six oh five P M., Town Hall, Seventeen Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To hear and review an application for a site plan approval under Chapter two fifty, Section eight point four of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg, for a daycare center with associated parking at thirty-nine Main Street, parcel zero six zero dash zero 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 seven dash zero 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 zero. Owner applicant is Robert Shapiro at one forty-four Northfield Road in Lunenburg, Mass. Materials are available for viewing at the planning office at nine sixty Massachusetts Avenue in Lunenburg.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Good to see you again. It's become a habit.
Evening.
Uh, Greg Roy with Dillison Roy. I'm representing Robert Shapiro, who's also with us this evening. Rob is a local business owner, lives on Northfield Road, been there for a long time, and owns a business that, services the needs of, um, developmentally, uh, uh, disabled, um, or challenged, uh, youth. So he has purchased this building to, um, uh, function as a school, sort of his, his base, uh, operations for that, uh, for that purpose. So the use code here this evening, uh, is, is school. That's what we've been, what we're using for daycare. And we've, we've used that particularly with the, when we've calculated the parking. The property is located within the Village, um, Ovale District, or the towns. Every town I go to says that differently, but the Village, uh, whatever the, the, uh,
Center District.
Thank you. Village Center District. And, um, it is a compliant lot within that district relative, with respect to area and frontage. The building, of course, is pre-existing. This is the, just to reference you, this is the, uh, the, um, the building that was owned by the church. So Andrews Hall, um, I think was the, uh, the name for it. The, in pink here is the L-shaped location of the existing building. You can see the, uh, the existing walkways, um, that we have shown here on the plan. Main Street orientation, of course, is right here on the, on the plan for you. And, um, there is no parking associated with, to speak of, uh, associated with this building today. So with the change of use, that's, of course, one of the things that we need to accommodate onsite, which is the primary purpose of why we're here. There is no proposed exterior enlargements to the building. All of the work that Mr. Shapiro will be doing will be interior to the building. Uh, renovations that will accommodate the new use. Uh, he is working with Damon McQuade, uh, local architect, to, uh, to do that, uh, fit up work. So the site plan before you today is really focused on the, uh, construction of a parking area, which is in this area here, shown in gray. There's, um, an existing curb cut that exists here. I believe this may have been used for parking. We have reports that, um, I think the building was built sometime in the fifties. And I think that history would show that, um, that some parking was done there historically. It seems to make sense. There's an existing curb cut here. There's a ramp, more or less, not paved, but a ramp where you could drive a car or a vehicle down there today. Uh, but most recently, when this was used as a daycare, uh, for the, when the church owned it and operated a daycare out of this, uh, facility, this area down here was, um, used as the fenced-in playground area, if you can recall that. But we've, um, we've put together the plans, um, as you can see here. This, this plan that's colored is the grading and drainage plan. We have shown the parking spaces. There is a total of, hold on. There's a total of thirty-three spaces shown. That will accommodate thirty students at, um, one space per five students, per your, per your regs, and twenty-seven staff at one space per staff member. So that's, that's how we get to our thirty-three number. We have, uh, actually thirty-one spaces on the slower level, and we're actually proposing two spaces up here in an existing area that's used for parking currently. We would like to pave those and put a handicap space for accessibility to the top floor, and then have a handicap space, both would be fully van-accessible, uh, for the bottom floor. So that's how we're, we're proposing that. The, um, the grading here basically mirrors the existing topography. Um, we're modifying it slightly, adding a little bit of fill really in this area to make sure that we have the appropriate grades coming down, uh, this ramp here into the, the, uh, lower parking area. And then, um, just modifying the grades enough so that we can, um, we get a max cross slope on the parking lot of about four or five percent, which is about the practical limit of what we can do. So you can kind of see how that, that lays in. We have a, you know, this is the high point. You come down the ramp, and then you continue down basically until you get to the end, uh, where we, uh, tie into the existing grade. There's a very significant slope in the back, um, between the sort of plateau area that's in this, this space here and the, uh, the wetland down below. And we're proposing to keep all of our work on the upper portion of that plateau area. So all of this work fits in with that, um, in that area. The proposed pavement, of course, requires stormwater mitigation. So we have designed a stormwater basin in this area right here. The existing topography of the site actually lends itself very well to a stormwater basin in that area. There's a, a plateau that exists down in there, a sort of a flat spot that we're using for that, um, by the construction of a berm, and we'll create a, uh, a detention basin right in there. There'll be two catch basins, one right here and one right there, that will drain through storm drains down into that, um, basin through a four bay, and then an elevator control structure, it's a conventional, very conventional type setup. Because of the configuration of the basin, being sort of long and narrow, we have the added benefit of not only picking up the, the new, run off from the new impervious areas of the parking area, but we'll also be picking up existing runoff from the roof areas, uh, which, uh, is a benefit certainly, uh, to the down gradient wetland. So we'll be able to, to pick up and mitigate that. Uh, so that drainage basin has been designed to accommodate that entire site, basically as you see in light green or pink or, or, uh, gray, as the case may be. Couple other, no, I want, I want to be a little brief here, and one of the reasons why is because I know that we are still waiting for peer review. Jeff, uh, from Graves has not finished his peer review yet. I, I certainly understand that your board will be looking for his comments prior to, uh, taking any action, which we, we totally understand. I understand that that's forthcoming in the next couple of days, hopefully. So we, we intend to get right on that after we, uh, after we receive those. The other thing I wanted to just point out to the board is that we, um, have filed with the Conservation Commission, um, a notice of intent for this work, because we're within the hundred-foot buffer zone. That meeting was opened last Wednesday, and, uh, was continued as well. So that's continued until next week, uh, Wednesday, I think, the third of, uh, of May. So I just wanted to put you in the framework of the overall permanent picture there. So I think I'll be brief, leave it at that tonight, and I'd be happy to take any questions or comments that the board may have.
Okay, super. Um, thank you. And let me thank you for, um, stepping up and reusing this building that has been in the memory of a lot of people in town, and I think this is a beautiful use for it. Any questions? Comments, concerns?
I don't have any at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay. It looks like there have been no waiver requests?
Say that again.
Are there no waiver requests?
We didn't, yeah, we didn't feel we needed to ask for any waivers on this one.
Okay.
Um, we do have the required part. I didn't show it on this plan, but on the one that's colored up, but in your packet, you'll see we have the interior landscape plantings and, I think we've shown everything that we, that's required on the, on the plan set, given that this is more in the category of, it's not really new construction, but it's, it's adding a new, uh, it's, it's not just, it's not like I've been the last couple of weeks where we've, uh, we've been taking an existing site and just sort of adding a new use to it. We're actually adding some infrastructure here. So we treated it as more of a new construction type site. So we didn't ask you for any waivers.
Super. Well, that's appreciated. It, it looks great to me. So okay, you were expecting a containment.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, 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 I thought it might be brief, but, uh, certainly if you had any, anything that, uh, that you'd like us to look at, we'd certainly would love to, address them, sort of macroscopically, along with Graves', um, peer review. But if you don't, that's fine, too. We're happy with that, but
Sure. I don't see that.
I don't want to manufacture comments in your head, but, you know.
Not a problem.
So I guess I would ask to the board, it, it seems like the board sees this and is not having significant concerns. Clearly, we're waiting for engineering comments, but is, is the board going to look for me to draft a draft decision for consideration at the next meeting? With the return of Graves' comments, do you want to hold off on that? It doesn't seem like the board has any significant concerns. It's now a matter of stormwater management, engineering, fitting, turning radii, that kind of stuff. Possibly, uh, it looks like you probably have access to all four sides of the building pretty easily, so I don't expect that there's any fire department issue there. It would expedite moving the project forward as we tidy up the engineering, but I also don't want to put words in the board's mouth.
Sure. I mean, I would be comfortable having a draft decision.
Yeah.
Okay. We would really appreciate that. Um, you know, this, this deal, land deal with, uh, Mr. Shapiro and the, uh, church happened, you know, I think probably like a month ago? And, uh, and so we, we moved pretty quick to get here. Rob would love to salvage a little bit of the summer to run some programs out of it. So, um, he's getting his contractors and stuff in order, um, sort of anticipating this, uh, this process. But, uh, so anything you can do to, um, anything we could do to move it forward would certainly be appreciative, but not, certainly not trying to, to rush you, but we do appreciate you being
Now, I personally don't see any problem with running programs out as is. Do you? I don't think there's any.
I think there's some building code concerns that would come into play. And I would sort of defer that to the commissioner and, and to the applicant's architect, but
Well, we think there's definitely some interior things that need to happen.
Yeah, that, that, that's more what I'm talking about, you know, alarm systems, fire suppression, exit paths, that kind of stuff.
One thing that may, may happen that, that we may ask you for, and I guess we can, we can, we can breach it now, is, um, if it was a scenario where, the interior fit up could get done in time, but he has a backlog with a site contractor, um, you know.
I think if the site plan is approved, and you are acting in good faith within the two-year window that the approval is good for, I don't see an issue with that sort of thing.
Okay. Yep.
You know, occupancy comes with the building code, and this, this is zoning, so it's, it's part of that, but I think that there are plenty of projects where the building code stuff can happen, and some site stuff goes through those motions, but, you know. It would be a matter of, you know, if, if it went two summers, then we start to get into enforcement issues and, and no one wants to do that, especially with a school or a, a school that serves children who are, you know, developmentally challenged. So I mean, I, I don't think it's an issue. I think that we can find a way to move that forward without too much hassle.
We appreciate that. Okay.
Super. Well, thank you again.
You bet.
I guess we look for a motion to continue the hearing?
I would move to continue the hearing for thirty-nine Main Street to, um, our meeting in two weeks, um, May, or I think that's two weeks.
It is eight May.
Uh, May, what's that?
Eight May.
Eight May. Okay. Uh, May eighth, twenty-twenty-three at six oh five P M.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Um, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Appreciate it. See you in a couple of weeks, Jeff.
Hopefully, everything's in, in order. So we review and endorse the decision for seventy-five-nine, seven-six-three, Northfield?
Yep.
The review is, hopefully you've reviewed it. And then if there's changes, we can make them. If not, you can sign it.
Can I see that?
Yep.
I have a question, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Please.
I, I actually, I just don't, I don't remember how we've done these in the past and what standard is. I know we mentioned the, you know, to clear six trees. Is it memorialized anywhere which six trees they're taking?
It's in the plan set that is, is it, is referenced.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And was presented here.
Yes. Okay, that makes sense. I knew it was there. I knew we had seen it. I didn't know how that tied in the decision, but
And this was one of the better plans that we get for this type of thing, because all the trees were survey located. It was very clearly, maybe over clearly drawn, because there was a lot of information on the plan, but, uh, it wasn't someone with the assessor's map and a pen going, oh, there's a tree here, and here, and here, and here, which we've also seen, and I think everything in between.
Practically. So does anybody have any issues with it? Can we go ahead and sign it? Yeah? We don't need a motion and a second.
No.
See, I, I have a backpack that doesn't belong to an elementary school today.
No flames or unicorns this week?
No.
All right, super. So now we're onto master plan discussion.
So this is the committee composition discussion, which I sent out, or I didn't send out. I put in the, groups, in the group email, or the group, uh, drive, my draft of potential steering committee composition. And as I sat doing it, it ended up at fifteen people, not nine, like I had hoped.
This is the, the master, uh, the mission statement?
Yeah, I, I sort of made it a, a mission statement, committee charge, composition. I figured the more we have, the easier it is to get people to buy into what we're trying to do. Really, I think the, uh, consideration bullet points are something that I just kind of threw down there and borrowed from some other places and sort of edited to be what I thought made sense for us, but obviously, you, you know, I'm looking for some input from you four on there. Any of this, I'm not married to any of it. I'm happy to, uh, talk about what it looks like, change it, type over it, completely delete it and redo it, whatever.
As far as Good. Uh, as far as I understood everything, uh, on here, um, it seemed to be pretty good, but obviously I don't have a lot of, experience necessarily with, with what this is going to be, but I didn't see anything that seemed, like drastically out of place, or
Fifteen is a lot of people.
That's true.
But I was having, I mean, clearly you can cut anybody, but I, I, we've talked so much about being inclusive and making it easier to get buy-in from people. It seems that, you know, if we were looking at, oh, who should we drop? I mean, maybe Housing Authority, maybe Zoning Board? But that gets you to thirteen. And is thirteen better than fifteen?
And at the same time, one of the points, like the bullet points we have here, have in here is, is, you know, related to, uh, housing.
Sure.
And what it's going to be like going forward. Though, I mean, based upon what's been put up here, like it is difficult to see, like, exactly where those cuts would happen.
Mm-hmm. I mean, it could be one planning board member and one select board member, but again, still, you're then at thirteen. You can get down to eleven by cutting housing and zoning and one of each of those boards, but does that, I mean, what are we trying to get to and, and what best gets us there, I guess is the question. And, and I, the way I see this group is meeting regularly, but not bi-weekly, maybe.
Okay.
Because I think a lot of this work is going to be digesting what is put forward by the, the consultant. And they're not doing, they're, they being the, the committee, is not looking to do data gathering and analysis. They're looking to review that data gathering and analysis and respond.
Right.
And, and bring information about what direction might be worth going. At least that's the way I see it. I, I, you know, I'm, I'm open. It's, it's, it's a committee you folks are creating, so ultimately it has to be something that you're all like, yeah, we, we think that's great, or we can accept that.
So, so with fifteen members, that would make a quorum of seven?
Make a quorum of eight.
Yes, sorry. So, um, that might be difficult. I mean, it, it, it's sometimes difficult having three people together, so.
I agree.
What is, like, procedure on having, uh, committees like this when it comes to things like, uh, subcommittees or, like, outside expertise? Like, if we've got questions about housing or, uh, uh, you know, like, uh, elderly people in the town, like, are those things can be referenced off to the other boards we have in town for input?
They could be that. Um, some master plan steering committees will take the committee and break it off into seven subcommittees. And those subcommittees will focus on reaching out and gathering information about each of those chapters. So like, we have a, one of, I mean, housing is one. So that might be a council on aging member and a planning board member. And, you know, maybe a zoning board member or a housing authority member, those three get together. And they sort of shop back to those individual boards. What do we think about this? Then they kind of get together and pull that chapter apart and respond.
Okay.
And, you know, maybe recreation and select board and conservation go look at the natural resources chapter.
Yeah.
Because that, they all have some stake in that. And maybe some people are only on one subcommittee. Maybe there's someone who's an animal who's on three or four of them, because they have that kind of time, and that's what they want to devote it to. You know, the, the idea is really to try and get as many voices
Sure.
in, together, looking at it, and the subcommittees would bring whatever work they do back to the larger group, and the larger group would then respond to that in kind.
Sure.
So you're, there's levels of work to be done, and it's an eighteen-month process. So the, it's, it, everyone is like, oh, that's so long, and it's not when you are trying to meet and get stuff done. Uh, and that's why the consultant drives a lot of it and does a lot of work offline and brings it back for, and it's important that the folks who participate are doing their homework as they go along.
I wonder on, I have a couple of thoughts. I, I wonder, kind of continuing with the idea of, uh, who should be on the committee? If it would, and I'm not convinced it is, but I wonder if it would be worth making some of the members voting members and some of the members liaisons? So that
Ex of issue, I think?
Yeah, whether the, yeah. Uh, that way they don't count towards, that way we don't need seven people for quorum necessarily. That creates a need to discuss which people should and shouldn't have a vote, and now I'm suggesting this, and I'm also going to say that I worry that Council on Aging picked completely randomly. If we say, oh, the Council on Aging, we want to hear what they have to say, but they don't have a vote, are they going to want to participate the same way? So I don't know the answer there, one way or another, but that's a thought I had.
And, you know, if we really wanted to try and knock the quantum down, we could chop as a, a planning board member, a select board member, and two members at large. And that gets you down to eleven, like that. That makes your quorum six. You know, and, and we suffer from what a lot of small towns do, S T P, the same ten people, who are on every committee and are willing to give of themselves, and that's lovely. It just makes it hard to keep asking for more. But this is a, in, critical component to the town.
Another thing I'll mention is the more groups, um, the more potential for outreach, I think.
Yes.
People are talking. Public outreach is going to be, you know, one of the, one of the primary goals of this exercise.
Uh, I was, Mr. Chair, I was wondering if we're, uh, for the, the bullet points for items identified for consideration in the master plan update include, but are not limited to the following. I don't know if that's the place to put it. I feel like we should be calling out, and we talk about, oh, there's going to be community meetings and stuff, but I, I feel like we should be calling out the, that one of the things that should be considered is the, I don't know if we want to call it the philosophy or the vision for the future of the town as held by the members of the town. It, it's less technical, but I feel like we have a lot here that says, we're going to look at needs of this, needs of that, and I, I feel like it's worthwhile saying. And the lens for these should be based on what the people of the town want Lunenburg to be in the future. And Adam, you could also turn to me and say, yeah, Matt, that's great, but that isn't where this belong, that, that doesn't belong here. I'm open to that.
I, I, I both agree and disagree that it belongs there. I think rather than it being a bullet point, because the bullet points seem to be more items that would fit into one of the elements. And what you're talking about is more a thematic
Very much so.
Or overarching principle of the plan.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe a follow-up statement to those bullet points that says these items are intended to be viewed through a lens of consensus amongst residents of Lunenburg and all efforts to be inclusive of as many portions of the population as is feasible are are looking to be made, something to that effect. I mean, I'd have to really.
In an ideal world, I would love that called out clearly immediately before people read the bullets, not after they read the bullets. Because it help.
So, I mean, we could even make that the sentence before the items declared, so it might say. So the plan is intended to be a consensus vision of the residents of Lunenburg, and all efforts will be made to include as many voices as feasible in its development. Items identified for consideration in the master plan include.
I I like that a lot. I I don't want to speak for the whole board.
And I mean, I'm open to, that's just.
I like that or something. Giving people the, here's the frame of, here's the frame we're using.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we're gonna talk about what we're filling it with. Um, is is a good way. Otherwise, people read it, they get an idea in their minds of what it's gonna look like, then you say, oh, by the way.
And I mean, do we want to try and knock the committee down to eleven?
I have a question on that. I don't understand what you're saying, getting a quorum of eight people, kind of difficult, I get that. Um, does it, is it possible to have, like, a proxy in that situation? So like, let's say somebody on the Parks Commission is appointed, they can't come, can somebody else stand in for them who is also on that commission? Does that make sense?
Have it a position that's held by a board member, not a specific person, kind of deal.
Exactly.
I don't see why we couldn't do it that way. Um, it's not a regulatory board.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a a board that is I mean, there's no financial implications, it's ultimately, they're not approving anything, they're guiding the master plan, which this board will have to adopt and then would be taken to town meeting for adoption, so I don't see why we couldn't do it that way. What you end up with then, though, is four members at large who are consistent, and they're the only people who are consistently required to be there.
Right.
Because it's difficult to create a rotating group of residents at large.
Sure. I I mean, unless you can say that if we do two Planning Board members, two Board of Selectmen, that those four, or if we go down to one each, that those particular people have to be the only ones. And the other commissions, you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, so like, one each allows you to immediately trim down Planning and Selectmen or to one, because it's gonna be shared information. But then you might also have the issue of who knows what on that board, like, what meetings have they been to, what pieces of information have they taken in? Uh, and how do you ensure that that information stays consistent?
Yeah, that's.
Would make the minutes quite challenging, too.
As I think it through, I I wonder is a fifteen-person port board actually going to have harder time hitting quorum than a smaller board? In that, y- y- you still need the same proportion of people to actually be there.
And we're talking about people who already are on boards and have to attend mostly uh meetings.
In my, in my, like, fantasy land brain, I mean, I'm also looking at going, but but this is a big deal.
Right.
Don't people get, they really need to be here for this on the regular, because this is so crucial to the future of our town. Now, again, I I know that's fantasy land brain, because real world is real world.
So, I mean, we we do regular committee reports, and I don't think the Select Board does as regular. And and it might make sense to make Planning and Select Board ex officio to cut down that number by one more. Since the Planning member is already gonna be here, I don't know, and and this is, this is a um a subcommittee of the Planning Board, so if they can't vote in this committee, they can vote in this, in this body. I don't know, how is it working out in the Economic Development Committee? With the ex officios?
It works out fine.
The, I mean, they.
They tend, they attend regularly.
Sure.
Stakes are lower.
Correct.
For the, for the Economic Development Committee, just being realistic, stakes are lower than.
Sure. And 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 again, this is not something that we couldn't change next meeting. Right?
Yeah, and I mean, it's not something you couldn't change if you sent it out, and everyone's like, are you crazy?
Yeah.
Uh, I will say, I I've been intermittently communicating with the consultant, mostly because they're sort of in a holding pattern until they get out here in the middle of next month. But I did let them know this is something the board's going to start talking about, and that I would follow up with them tomorrow with, you know, sort of a draft of what the board is on, um, and they may have some additional input on, this is great, or, you know, really, these folks here, while they might be great, aren't, we don't need to have it designated from them, and maybe you can get someone there as a, as a member at large.
I think there's real value in leaning, I mean, in leaning on the expertise of the experts we have hired.
Mm-hmm.
When I hear you say that? I think as we talk personally, I am incli, I am increasingly inclined to go with the fifteen that were mentioned, because I I don't see, I really like two members of the Planning Board, and I really like two members of the Select Board there because of how much this overlaps with.
Everything.
Yeah. Um, and and I see the other people that you've put there, and I look at it and go, yeah, I I want, I want the Council on Aging to have a voice, I want the School Board to have a voice in all of this, and I I'm hoping that we can just really drum home that this is a big deal for the town, and people will commit, and I think, I'm hoping that people who volunteer will commit.
Well, and my hope is that by saying it's an eighteen-to-twenty-four-month commitment end of the day, some people are willing to bite their lip and say, you know what, I can do that for a finite period of time, and I can be disrupted for that. Without, you know, because sometimes you get on a committee like the Municipal Building Design Committee, and what's intended to be eighteen months turns into twenty-four years.
We're halfway there. Um, so my inclination would be slap draft right across this, send it out to everybody that's listed here and all department heads, to see if there's anybody that would like to be included that hasn't been.
Okay.
I mean, I, we're struggling with this fifteen number, it's possible that there could be more interest and it could go up. Is there, you know, do we, do we want to resist that, or do we want to encourage it, or do we want to let it be what it, what it will be? I'm not quite sure how we could encourage or discourage.
Does anybody have experience organizing and, like, controlling committees that large?
Moderator.
Okay.
I I do in other venues, yes. I I don't know that the way I typically run is what town government would want necessarily, but I've, I've been there, done that, so.
Sure. Because I mean, that's, that's the main thing that I understand that is an issue uh as these get larger, is both making sure you've got everybody there that you need, and the fact that it gets loud, because you've got so many different voices looking for so many different things. Yeah.
To your question, Mr. Chair, I, I like the idea of sending it, sending it out, and I like the idea of getting feedback, because there may be people who really feel they should be involved, but I like them to make their case why. Similarly, if a group here is like, we really don't think we need to be on this, I I'd love to hear a sentence or two, why, just so we have a, I mean, if they don't want to do it, they're probably not gonna do it, but I'd still love to hear a very brief reasoning, so we can understand where people are coming from on it.
Sure.
And I think with the group, right group management, you can make a group of any size work. It gets trickier in some ways, and like some of the techniques I use, I I don't know if they work with. I don't know the way that um some larger group management techniques for meetings overlap as well with public meetings due to the uh more formal nature of public meetings, and and the kind of more ritualized communication we have, but I don't know how much of that really is necessary versus is just what's done.
And I think it also depen, depends on the context of the meeting. So these meetings are very formal, because it's an adjudicatory board who's processing things under certain laws and rules. I've done master plans where it was just chaos at meetings. People crying, people cheering, people, you know, you know, member, eleven, thirteen-member boards, and they, it was, you know, very informal. Uh, and I think that the meeting can be done that way, because you're a working group, more so than a formal representative of the government. I expect AGCOM is pretty informal.
Pretty laid back.
Yep. So I think it really, it goes to the nature of what
Okay.
those meetings are.
Upon hearing that, I I'm comfy with, I I am comfy with the concept of a large group, because whoever's running it has more tools in their toolbox than than exist in the more, um, again, the the heavily ritualized, for good reason, communication we do here.
Yeah, and and any collection of individuals is gonna take on its own, its own thing anyway, so. So do we want to leave it as is and put draft and run by everybody?
Yeah.
Sound good? Sound good to you?
Mm-hmm.
Super.
I I, I would like if we could include some version of the sentence that Adam put in and mentioned previous, it doesn't have to be.
I've already put it in there.
Okay, great, then I'm very comfy with it.
Okay. Super. Forward progress. Solar bylaw, we probably will skip.
Yep. I don't have anything, driveways and entrances for you.
Were we supposed to receive some kind of, like, documentation, or like, here was my information on this?
Yeah, and I, I, you know, I I, that, totally my fault, I sent it to her very late, and I said, listen, my recollection is this, I haven't gone back through my previous notebook to get out what it is. Um, so I told her, I said, I'm gonna email you while I'm thinking about it. I- if you recall what it is, please send it to me, if not, I'll go through my notebook and and get you a better detail of what that looks like and uh circle back.
Okay, sounds good.
Super, so now we're up to minutes approval.
Mm-hmm.
We have two sets. Not used to seeing graphics in minutes.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the minutes for our April tenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting, and for the public hearing on the town meeting warrant articles on April tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Are we good?
All second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on minutes approval? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Open space ad hoc, I missed the last meeting. I I believe they did have it, because I think I saw a video um with about half-hour length on it. There was nothing new on the agenda that I recall. Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee, don't believe they've met, I think they were looking towards mid-May for the next meeting. Uh, Agricultural Commission, we met early last month, so I don't, we haven't met since our last meeting. Capital Planning Committee?
Uh, we're out of season for that, I I had thought we have, we had one more meeting coming up at some point, but I'll loop back with Mr. Alonso to see, because I might have been mistaken on that.
To approve the minutes of the last meeting, probably, right?
Uh, the, the, if I'm, if I'm working, if I remember correctly, that happened, but there was now the need, there was a talk of reviewing the process.
Okay.
But I will, that may have also, I was not there for the minutes meeting, uh approval meeting, so maybe that happened there, and I am unaware of it, I will double check.
Isn't that just a continuous loop, though? Because then there's minutes to the meeting to approve the minutes, and you have to have a meeting to approve those minutes for approving the minutes.
Forever.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, yep.
It's like the mirrors at Kmart.
Okay, um, anything else on capital planning?
Nope.
Economic Development Committee?
Is slated to meet, I have on my calendar, it's this Thursday.
Thursday, yeah, that's correct.
Great, yep, slated to meet this Thursday.
Okay, Stormwater Task Force?
Uh, we met last week. We talked about uh reorganization, our chair has left for greener pastures. Um, I think we're gonna do that next month.
Maybe the month after, because we meet before the election, so we'll wait till we have a new Select Board member.
Perfect. Um, and then our, mainly it was our DPW director gave um a lot of information about MS four. He had a lot of pages on, just, there's links you can follow where you can learn about the projects. Different learning opportunities for that, and he also gave us cost updates, I don't really remember a whole lot else.
And uh, he gave an update, we have an asset management grant, so uh the state is paying for the town's uh stormwater infrastructure to be mapped. So we've hired uh C, CEI, who is our stormwater consultant, to map catch basins, pipe inverts and outlets and direction, so we'll have a comprehensive data on our entire stormwater system, which will be, help us comply with the permit and will be useful for long-term maintenance.
So that'll be good, CEI did it originally, and um, they did that. So that'll be good. CEI did it originally, and they did that when they first...
Correct. Well, yeah, we had some catch basin data, and they, they bulked it up, and now they're using that catch basin data to locate pipes and direction and where they go. We also learned the difference between accuracy and precision.
Yes, we did.
Precisely accurate. Okay, so MRPC?
MRPC, we have not met since our previous meeting. And MJTC, we had a meeting on the 12th, I missed it, I had a work conflict.
Okay. Very good, that rounds out committee reports, directors items.
Me, me, me. So, in your drive, or in front of you, is the DEP's model groundwater protection bylaw. This is what we had spoken about the last time. So it's here for your perusal, I'd be happy to discuss it this evening, with the caveat that I'm hopeful that in the next 30 days, we'll have a new building commissioner, who has indicated he is willing and prefers to work with the planning director and board on bylaw updates. So it may, you know, I'm, again, happy to discuss it, I don't think we should finalize anything, but I think getting his input would be helpful, since ultimately, it's going to fall in his lap to shake the stick at people about doing this correctly. I'm going to infer that not all of you have read through this in full detail. And I would propose that in Section 4... Where's it, Section 4? For the purpose of this bylaw, yes, hereby established within the town of Lunenburg, certain groundwater protection areas consisting of aquifer or recharge areas, specifically Zone 2, adding in some language that we're looking to specifically regulate Zone 2, not Zone 3 or 1. And I think this would be a good opportunity to use the water district's more updated map from 2021, because doing so is blessing more recent data, and will be more sustainable going forward. And if we're eliminating Zone 1, hopefully, some of the conflicts that folks were having around that, updating the map date will, will go away. I will draw your attention to Section 8, where 8.1(c), "The rendering of impervious any lot or parcel more than 15% of 2,500 square feet, whichever is greater, unless artificial recharge is provided." This is what I was talking about the last time around, where our current bylaw doesn't allow us to break 15%, doesn't, no way, no how. This does, you can get a special permit for it, or you can provide artificial recharge that matches with the stormwater handbook, which ultimately adds treatment, reinfiltrates, and keeps the water going where we want it, so that we still have water to drink. And I think that in and of itself is a big improvement, in addition to the very specific definitions from, excuse me, the various DEPCMRs on the uses and activities that they find objectionable.
So this is what we currently have?
Correct.
And can you tell us what the part you want to strike is?
Yes. All of it. You know, and again, I mean, if we look at it and compare them side to side, they have all the, you know, purpose, district delineation, use regulations. The one that we currently use has use regulations for 1, 2, and 3. It has special permit procedures that are somewhat antiquated. It has uses that are allowed in the Zone 2 that are similar to what's allowed in the other. It requires, it has some antiquated language. New two-family detached dwellings are permitted in the district if located on a lot having one and a half times the area required, which is not required per our bylaw any longer. You know, it says 20% in one place, it says 15 in another. It references back to 1991, where things were significantly different in the way that they were applied, and the ability and technology to do some of the things necessary to mitigate these issues were, were not there, or were less approachable. It doesn't allow the storage of things in Zone 2, even inside a building, which now, the new one allows it inside a building with proper containment. So what they do is they pour the floor with a rubberized membrane, and the building itself is the containment. It allows it outside with 110% of the volume containment. So you could have a tank, as long as it has a reservoir underneath, that should it leak, it would hold it and not allow it to leach into the ground. And you get Clean Harbors or someone like that out to clean up the mess. So I think it's, it's a matter of contemporizing the bylaw. We've, we've been working over the past nine years to take the bylaws we have and bring them out of the 70s, 80s, and 90s, and into the 21st century, and I think we're hitting a point where that's, that's the next step.
It's always leery, I'm always leery of deleting entire things and replacing them. But I think it would be good idea to just take a good, long look at...
I was going to say, I really do encourage you to pour through the 254.9, and, and look at the inconsistencies, and think about the impacts that that has on normal development. At the last meeting, I know you said you're concerned about, well, because we're not enforcing it, doesn't mean we should change it. And I agree with the sentiment. I also think about what is the purpose of the draconian nature of some of the regulations in there, and what is the overall impact to the community? Individual homeowners, businesses, the town as an entity, and its needs for economic development or business growth in an environmentally sensitive and contextually appropriate way. This will benefit certain people immediately, it will benefit the town, I think, in a, in a longer term.
Okay, homework. Anything else on that? Anything from you?
Nope.
Okay. Meeting schedule, blah, blah, blah?
Town meeting is our next joint. May 6, be there or be square.
Our next joint? You can't smoke in the school.
It's our next meeting.
Where is it?
Wow, that'd make it a lot...
The middle high school.
The middle high school.
Did you say it would make it a lot better?
I said more fun, sir.
I was thinking it would make it a lot longer.
That, too?
Yeah.
But man, the vending machine would create business, so...
But you can't eat in the auditorium.
All right, so any of these ongoing items need addressing?
They do not. I mean, we're going to need to address MBTA communities, but I have, I don't have an update on that.
Okay. Is there any public with us?
No.
Is there any board comment concerns?
I have, I have a vague request for Adam, if I may. So, being aware of my own ADHD, if there are things that you would like us to make sure we review before a specific date, having a, and if, I hate to ask you to put more things on your plate, especially this effectively, hey, Adam, can you be a functioning human being in the way I'm not? But if, in, in email out saying, hey, you know, this meeting's coming up, it'd be great if you could review X, or I could really use feedback on Y by this date, with a little bit of lead-in time. Because I'm happy to put a lot of time into this board, but I'm also very guilty of out of sight, out of mind, I'm going to put out the fire in front of me. But an email puts that fire in front of me. If that, if and when that's feasible, and you think it would be helpful to make sure you...
Yeah, I was going to say, I have two comments, you're cute to think that I'm a functional human. And two, I will do my best to remind the board what and when I, I would like reviews.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for that. All right, so anything else? Any comments, concerns, questions? All right, then I guess I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I would move to adjourn this meeting.
I will second that.
Any further discussion about adjournment? All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent, we are officially adjourned.